I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 22nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I am Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman, Richard Parker. Due to the Corona pandemic, this meeting is being held via the Zoom platform. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. If anyone has any technical or connection difficulties, please contact Conrad Omedo at 336-214-4515 for support. For for tonight's public comments to address the commission, please indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if by phone, press star nine, and our meeting host will notify me that you wish to speak. Anyone who speaks must give their name and address for the record. I would like to confirm that all commission members and staff members on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. And if you unmute, so I can hear you. All right, first on the list is John Black. James Kirkpatrick.
Affirmative.
Nicole Enick.
Present.
Ryan Kirk.
Present.
Nancy Rosenborough.
Here.
Earl Jaggers. Bill Aplinapp.
Here.
Okay. So Joey, how does that affect our voting for tonight? So Nancy knows?
We have a full seven member board.
Okay. All right. Staff participants, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Zoning Administrator Joey Lee.
Here.
Conrad Omedo, Planning Manager.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. This commission is appointed by elected members and has seven regular members and one alternate. Four members constitute a quorum. This is a public meeting, so if you have come to speak tonight, we'll let you in at the appropriate time and you must give your name and address. But before we start the meeting, does anyone have a conflict of interest for any of the items on our agenda?
No.
I see a bunch of no's, 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 okay. All right. Joey informed me that we haven't got the minutes quite yet for the last meeting, so we'll skip the approval of the minutes until our next meeting. Looks like John Black may have gotten through. Has he been letting in?
Yes, sir, he is. He is now on.
Okay. John, let's see your camera. If you can. All right. So the next item on the agenda is number three. Mr. Dennis Yulis to present a request to rezone from O and I Office Institutional District to HDR High Density Residential District. Property is located on the northeast intersection of Kirkpatrick Road and Grand Oaks Boulevard, referred to as Alaman's County Tax Identification Number 112942. Mr. Yulis.
Oh, no, no.
Sorry about that.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yes, I'm looking to try to try to rezone that HDR. I'm not looking at adding any more units or anything, leaving the same complex that we're building there now. Just more or less getting that commercial lot to stay O and I that's already out there, so I could build a, a, or some sort of office building in the future. Y'all have any questions, be glad to answer for you, but like I said, we'll be no more apartments being built other than departments that's already out there.
So you're asking to rezone from office in industrial to high density residential. What'd you say about it? Office, say that again.
There, there's the corner lot is zoned O and I, and of course, all of those, though, and I, and something happened where y'all changed your, whether they changed their ordinance or something.
Yeah, I think I could. My name is Aiden Stoltz-Fuss with Stoltz-Fuss Engineering. I'm just here to answer technical questions, but I'm the engineer for the project, for Grand Oaks Apartment Project. Basically, the property there at the corner of Professional Park and Kirkpatrick Road was included in this overall development. And this was prior to the zoning ordinance taking effect last November. So we kind of reserved that, that office until we, one, found out kind of further detail on the zoning ordinance, and two, just to see if, you know, there was any, you know, chance to rezone that property to a little bit higher density residential. So this is the request that we're asking for tonight, and it would match the zoning of the adjacent apartment complex. I hope it makes sense.
You're already building the apartments though now, right?
Correct, and all that's been approved, and so we're, they're under construction and all three of the buildings are dried in. So that means I'd never have the ability to add any more units. The space has already been done. The parking lot requirements are there, all the setbacks and all your buffer lines are there. So it's not like I could come back and add more units. You're still gonna get the same 108 you got now. I'm just gonna get that one office lot back where I could build a doctor's office, dentist's office, something like that in the future. So that corner lot would stay O and I, and it's zoned O and I now.
Which, I'm, I'm still confused.
Right now, for a point of clarification, I think the applicant's discussing this corner lot right here, but that's not a part of the, this request. We're just looking at the actual.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the northeast corner of Grand Oaks Boulevard and Kirkpatrick Road is what is being requested from, to rezone from an O and I Office Industrial to a High Density Residential rezone zoning in order to make it more consistent with the, the, the unified development ordinance. And that's, that's what the applicant's referring to that has changed since their original submittal, which occurred pre the Unified Development Ordinance.
Okay, so this office business doesn't have anything to do with our decision.
I'm sorry.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you, you had me there confused a little bit because I didn't have any idea what you were talking about. Okay. Are there any questions for this applicant from the commissioners? Anybody? Okay. Are there any, Conrad, is there anyone who would like to speak from the public?
Let me just make sure in my chat. I don't see anyone with the raise hand feature to speak on this item, and I'm not seeing anybody in the chat indicating that they would like to speak on this item, sir.
Okay. All right, Joey, can we have a recommendation from the Planning Department?
This, this request is consistent with the, with the land use plan based on the use and its surroundings. And as Dennis stated, this originally, the density for this was based on the adjacent property, which was MFA multifamily prior to the UDO. Because of that, that corner lot, which is on Professional Park Drive, was part of the property that gave them the density to build the number of units that they had. So what they're asking for in the, under the UDO requirements, the high density residential, we'll be able to allow them to keep the density that they have on the lot by itself without the corner lot.
Okay.
And that therefore they'll be able to develop it for other purposes.
I see.
With that, staff recommends approval of the request.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up. Thank you. All right, are there any other questions now before we ask for a motion? Anybody?
Joey, I have one, and call me an idiot. This land's currently zoned O and I.
That is correct.
And they started building apartments on it, which by the way, I'm gonna make a motion to approve it because I think it fits. It was zoned O and I, but yet they were allowed to start construction without the proper zoning, or is that because the adjacent land was slotted?
No, and, and this was, this was approved prior to our current.
Oh, okay.
Requirements. And the old requirements in O and I Office Institutional, multifamily development went by the nearest residential district. In that case, it was the multifamily MFA, which was right behind them.
Okay.
Now that MFA is HDR under the new requirements. That density is actually a little bit higher than what the MFA was, but it keeps their density. They're allowed now to have that same amount of density on the one lot without the corner lot that's on Kirkpatrick. I mean, Professional Park, sorry. But that makes sense.
Yeah, it ma, it makes a whole lot of sense. I didn't understand. I couldn't get my head wrapped around it, but you fixed it, so thanks.
Yeah.
And I like the project, by the way.
Yeah. So with that, if there are no more questions, do I hear a motion?
Yes. I move to recommend approval of this request to rezone from O and I Office Institutional District to HDR High Density Residential District. The property is located on the northeast intersection of Kirkpatrick Road and Grand Oaks Boulevard, referenced as Alaman's County Tax Identification Number 112942. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land, land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive this area to have commercial and residential uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential uses. The action is reasonable, and in the public interest in that, the comprehensive plan calls for commercial and residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Jagger seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, gentlemen, thank you very much for coming to our meeting. You're on to city council now, so you have to do this one more time in front of the city council. So I hope you can make it clear about your corner lot there to them, so they don't get confused like we did.
Joey did us a favor. Hopefully Joey will be at the city council.
He will be, but y'all get your word.
You never move.
All right, well, thank you all for coming, and we appreciate, appreciate everything y'all are doing out there to improve our, our land and make it look nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number four, Mr. Christopher Powell to present a request to rezone from MDR Medium Density Residential District to LI Light Industrial District. Properties are located at 2747, 2755, 2803 Maple Avenue, referenced as Alaman's County Tax Identification Numbers, 130716, 130714, and 132181. Mr. Powell. Are you here?
Mr. Powell should be connecting on.
Yes, here we are. Sorry, we were having a little bit of a computer slowdown there. Thank you, guys. I'm Christopher Powell, Project Manager and Trustee over the properties that we're talking about, the 2803, 2755, and 2747. These three linear properties are all in combination with one another that we're, we're looking at changing. Each of these three properties are currently, they have one small residence. These are all rental houses, which eventually will go away. The request is to rezone each one of these from MDR to LI. These lots also back up to the Powell Enterprises properties there off of Anthony Road and Noble Lane. Those are just to the west of the three lots that we're looking at, and all three of those are currently zoned LI as well. We sent out in February a little over a dozen letters to all the neighboring properties within 300 feet, and had some responses, all of which have been followed up on in kind and productive manners, detailing the project plans and what we have, and exploring the individual concerns of, you know, traffic, volume, property change, noise and lighting. And we've gone through that in some detail with each, each one of those. And after discussing those, each of the concerns has been deemed either a non-issue or just favorably positive for each one of the neighboring properties. We haven't heard from everyone. However, responses have been favorable towards the end of it, once we fully verbalize what the plan was. So we're wanting to change those. We believe that to be in line with Burlington Strategic Plan, and believe that'll be, what we have in mind is a nice project for, for both the neighborhood and hopefully for us as well. So we, we submit the request to change that, change those three properties from MDR to LI.
All right, so this is a straight rezoning. We have no, no plans in front of us or no conditions on this. Mr. Lee, do you have any comments concerning this before we get started?
Just that this does meet the land use plan. The land use plan calls for that area to be industrial. It is contiguous with industrial zoning, and staff is recommending approval of the request.
Okay. Before we hear any comments from the public, does the board have any, does the commission have any questions of the applicants? Anybody would like to ask a question, please mute yourself, unmute yourself and speak to Mr. Powell, if you will.
I guess I'll ask a question. The, the properties that concern me are the residential ones immediately to the north. It almost seems like they're getting boxed in on all sides by industrial. And I'm curious if you all were able to talk to any of those owners of those. There's a couple of, is it condos or townhomes and so forth? And was there any exchange with them?
Yes, Ryan, we have. We've had about half a dozen conversations with some folks that have called in. We sent the letters out to their addresses, however, didn't have direct lines of communication to talk to each one of them. But they have called, they have voiced a couple of concerns, and we've noted those and talked through those with them. And we believe that all the issues that they had, of course, the traffic issues, and we heard some on lighting with noise and with just, I think we lost video a little bit. But otherwise with, you know, there were some concerns of property values there as well, and we addressed all those with them. And we believe mutually that that should, these issues should either be a non-issue or unnoticedable, you know, on black and white. But we have spoken with them and have some, had some conversations. And the, the ending feeling was positive, and we felt good after communications with them.
Okay, thank you. Do any other commissioners have a question? Any, anything, anybody want to ask Mr. Powell? Mr. Black? Nicole, Bill?
Mr. Chairman, I would notice we received a memo this afternoon late from a concerned individual. Were there any other comments, phone calls, mentions made to the staff? Joey? Yes, I've received approximately 10 phone calls. A lot of those were from the condominium complex. If you look there on the map, straight across the street. All of those, all the ones that I talked to did voice concerns about development there, creating additional traffic noise and what the impact it may have on their property values. But as Richard said, this is a straight rezoning. We don't know what's gonna be developed there. My discussion was that when, when and if it is developed, any traffic concerns would be taken into account at that time.
So it, this, this rezoning would split residential sections to the left and right of it. So in essence, you would have residential section, then this light industrial, then another residential. So it sort of splits a residential section in twain, correct?
That would be correct. But if you look at your land use plan, that entire area there is, is slated for industrial zoning and industrial use.
Well, I understand what you're saying, being slated for it, but what right now we have is residential. So, you know, I, I understand the concept of, well, we would like to put industrial in that area, but right now it's all residential. So I don't know that the land use plan supersedes what the people are doing right there now. Thank you, Mr. Black. Any other comments before we hear from the public? All right. Conrad, do you have anybody that would like to speak to this commission?
Yes, sir. Chairman Parker, I have Ms. Glenda Boone, who will, I'll let in right now, who will then be followed by someone who's on a Galaxy Tab A, who will then follow by Ms. Betsy Franco. So I'll go ahead and let Ms. Glenda Boone in.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Ms. Boone. Could you turn your camera on?
No. I live at 2812D Maple Avenue, which is in the Mapleview condos. And I appreciate that Chris said he had, I think the things that he said he had addressed with other people are probably the concerns that I have, but I have not heard a response as to the answers to those questions. Am I making any sense?
What is your question, Ms. Boone?
Oh, I'm sorry, you weren't part of the, the increased traffic, property values. And I do understand from what you've said tonight that there is, you have no idea what would be slated for that particular, those properties. Conrad did send me some things that could be possible things that go on the property under the, that zoning. And I mean, the first thing on there was like adult. And I don't think the Powells would do that, but the, you know, adult and barred, yeah, adult entertainment. So can he enlighten us as to what they think they'll be there? Or that's not something that you can require before y'all vote on it?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much the case, Ms. Boone. This is what we call a straight rezoning. And until the plans are submitted to the Planning Department, we as the commission don't have any knowledge of what this petitioner wants to build. So we just do it on the merits of what's, what could be built. And once the plans are submitted, then the Planning Department would vet the project and decide whether or not it's, could be, you know, could be fitted in the neighborhood. Is that right, Mr. Lee?
That's correct, and I just want to say one thing. You, you mentioned adult establishments. Obviously, however many years from now, they might not own it. There could be other uses on it, but I just want to let you know that an adult establishment could not be built on that property. There's a 1,500-foot separation from that property to residential. And with it being across the street, next door, and well within that area, that could never be a use for that property. Just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, and I really did not want to imply that that's what I thought he would do. It's just that maybe there was, it, it's wide open for anything. Convenience stores, all kinds of things, right? So our next step would be that if it is rezoned, then when it comes up with the plans for what he proposes to do, that's when we would say our two cents worth again.
Glenda, if I may, I, I hate to bring the board into the minutia of the, of the details, especially with straight rezoning requests. I would be glad to extend ourselves to, you know, after this meeting, give you any kind of details that we can on the project, and we'd be glad to help answer any concerns that you have. I, I think the board wishes that we not get into that during the meeting, but we would be glad to help you out with any of those concerns that may help you rest easy.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks, thanks, thanks for your comments, Ms. Boone.
Thank you.
And guys, if there's a way that I could share contact information after the meeting and give that to anybody that's concerned, I'm not sure how to do that on Zoom, but if we may be able to set up. Of course, I think you can Google Powell Enterprises, and I believe you can get some contact information that way.
Okay. All right, are there, Conrad, are there any others that would like to join in the conversation?
Yes, Chairman Parker, there is, someone noted on the Galaxy Tab A8. I will now promote them to panelists, and they'll be able to address the commission.
Okay.
They, following them will be Ms. Betsy Franco.
Okay. Galaxy Tab, if you will identify yourself and your address, please.
Lisa Miller, and my address is 2804C Maple Avenue, Burlington, North Carolina, 27215.
That was Lisa, you said?
Yes, Lisa Miller.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Miller, with your comments to the commission.
I live at the same condo units as well with Glenda Boone, and my concerns are the same as hers. I actually live closer to the, to the, to Maple Avenue than she does. So it's a big concern for me as far as noise, traffic, lighting. The same as her concerns, basically. I mean, it's right here in front of our drive, you know, we have to see this all the time, and we would really appreciate it if it would stay residential.
Okay. I believe Mr. Powell has offered some explanation offline. And maybe he can give you a call, Ms. Miller, and tell you what his plans are. But at this meeting, it's just a straight rezoning for us, so we can't say anything about the merits of the project because we frankly don't know what his project is. So maybe in the, if you would give your phone number or a contact for Mr. Powell through the chat or some, some way, I don't know. What's the best way, Conrad, to get those two together?
Ms. Miller, if you're more than welcome to call our office or if you have an email. You can also, are you able to use the chat feature? You can send me a direct message with your phone number.
Yes, I can.
Okay. And if, if it doesn't go through, just call our office, 222- Okay. And if, if it doesn't go through, just call our office, 222-5110. 222-5110 and we'll, we'll get you through.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to our meeting, Ms. Miller. Who's the last speaker or?
We have a Ms. Betsy Franco. We'll be bringing her in now.
Okay. All right. Welcome, Ms. Franco. If you would, please mute yourself. And give us your name and address.
Unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry. What did I say? Mute? I've been doing this too long, John.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Franco. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Betsy Franco and I live in 2804 D. I'm right next to Lisa. I heard everything that you said, except I didn't hear about a property value. Is it, is it gonna affect our property value? That's my biggest concern. And I didn't get that number. I'm sorry. It was 222.
5110 is our general planning number.
Okay. And I will be addressing you, Conrad?
I'm sorry, what would this be in regard for?
I wanted to know if our property value, is it gonna affect our property value? The rezoning.
Betsy, we would be glad to reach out to you and talk to you about that. We are not licensed appraisers. However, we can at least do the best we can to address your concerns. We do have some estimates on that and we can talk with you through that.
Okay.
I would hate to address that during this meeting, but we would be to talk to you at extent about that if you would like.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Franco.
The, the young, the gentleman that just spoke, does he have everybody's telephone number here in these condos?
No, we do not.
Okay. How can I get my number to you so you can call me?
Well, if you feel comfortable with telling it here, we would be glad to write it down.
Yes, I'd be fine. That'll be fine with me.
Ms. Franco, before you do that, this is a public meeting that's being recorded. If you don't mind, you can send me a direct chat with your contact info or email me directly or caller number. Why don't you, yeah, our phone number is 222-5110. And give us a call tomorrow morning and we'll be able to set you up. Mr. Powell, I'll go ahead and forward you the contact of, we open at eight o'clock.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franco, for coming to our meeting. We'll try to get your questions answered. Anybody else, Conrad, who would like to join our meeting?
Yes, Chairman Parker, there is an additional comment. I have them as Bill and Jeanette, and I will be bringing them into the panel.
Welcome, Bill and Jeanette. If you would, please give us your name and your address to address the board.
Yes, I'm Bill Simmons. I'm at 2806 Maple Avenue, Apartment A.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Simmons.
What I would like to know is, do we have any idea how this is going to affect our taxes with the rezoning across from us there? And is it gonna affect the zoning on our side of the street?
Joey, you want to answer that?
Well, it, it will not affect zoning on your side of the street. That will not change or not be affected. I can't speak for the taxes. It depends on what they build. I think the taxes would be more pertinent to their property. I don't know that it really have an effect on your property tax wise, but I'm not, I'm not an appraiser, so I couldn't, I couldn't tell you that.
So it depend on how our property values changed if they did. It would affect the taxes.
Based on how it's appraised, I would assume so. Could be one way or the other. It could go up, could go down, but I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And to all of our visitors, we remind you that this commission only makes recommendations to the city council. And we can't rezone anything. We just make recommendations. And the city council will have their meeting to discuss these items in which you can return to voice your opinion. So we're just, we're just gonna pass on a recommendation tonight to city council. And then they, it's, they're the authority that has the right to rezone anything. So Joey, you've already stated that you would approve this zoning or you, you are in approval of it. Are there any other questions for the staff before we ask for a vote? Earl, Ryan, anybody? Nicole? Okay. We've heard the presentation. We've heard from at least four people in the public. Based on all that, do we have a recommendation for a motion? Do we have a motion? Anyone like to make a motion?
I, I'm not ready to make a motion, but I think the quiet here means that this is due a little more discussion. Like John and I have the same concern about splitting an existing residential block. Is that correct, John?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have, yeah, if this were, if this were on the edge facing, what is it, sheets and you were working that way. But I always have to look at it, would I like somebody putting a piece of business property between me and my neighbors, three or four houses down? And my answer would automatically be no. Of course, this is a straight zoning. I understand that. The public is correct. They don't know if it's gonna affect their taxes. We don't know about lighting, noise, traffic. Of course, that would come afterwards, but I'm, I'm with you in that I just don't feel comfortable encroaching on property that is already residential, even though the, the UDO says this should be industrial and maybe it will be 10 or 15 or 20 years down the line. But I just don't feel comfortable with it.
And to add on to that, I have similar concerns. Some of those townhomes just north of there, next to the sheets. I mean, those are 10 years, less than 10 years old, right? A couple of those. So they're, they're fairly new developments, so. I, I don't think they would have predicted that they invested in those to have light industrial to the south and commercial to the north. So I'd be curious if anybody else has a response to those concerns that John and I have.
I have the same concerns.
Okay, I guess I'll make the motion.
I don't have the sheet.
Are you, you don't, you didn't read it? So it's gonna be one of the denial option. The Planning and Zoning Commission believes this request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plans and move to recommend denial. I move, we recommend denial this request to rezone from MDR Medium Density Residential District to LI Light Industrial District. The properties are located at 2747, 2755 and 2803 Maple Avenue. Referred as Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 130716, 130714 and 13218. Motion is based upon the inconsistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan and that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have industrial uses and is located adjacent to industrial zoning. The requested zoning is not necessary for this location. This action is reasonable and public interest in that the requested rezoning is incompatible with existing land uses in the area. The current zoning is preferable for the area.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we need to see hands raised, so everybody turn on your camera so we can get a correct vote, please. Nancy, if you could.
Nancy's not voting.
Oh, Nancy is not voting. I'm sorry. I thought you said she was. Okay. All right. So we've got a motion to deny. All in favor of that motion, raise your hand by saying a.
A.
Three, four. All opposed, raise your hand. Four to three. Okay. Motion carries for denial. So gentlemen, Mr. Powell, you'll have to make your case at city council, but we're split on this, three to, three to four. All right. Thank you for coming. Thank, thank you for the lively discussion. Is there any other comments concerning this? Joey, do you have anything else? Okay. Our next item is Chad Meadows to present amendments to Chapter 5, Section 5.6, signage of the UDO. Where's Chad? There's Chad.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, how's everybody?
Good, good.
Good. We have a very, very quick presentation for you tonight. There are a couple of minor signage issues that we're gonna talk about, and I think we can dispose of this fairly quickly. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Share. You should see, I hope, UDO TA 0221. Our net, our second text amendment for this year. Does everybody see my screen and can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we could hear you.
Great. Okay. I know you guys are happy to be seeing from, seeing me so soon again, but we've got something that is pressing. And we, the staff wanted to go ahead and, and deal with this matter or these two matters as quickly as possible. This is a very, very focused set of amendments. There are two issues that we're dealing with. The first is adjusting the sign regulations to allow vehicles with signage when they're located on the same lot or site as the business that they serve. And the second issue is some adjustments to the wall sign provisions, dealing primarily with taller buildings. So with that, I'm gonna jump in. I, I promise this, this is fairly simple stuff. Item one, the vehicular signs. This is page approximately 5-87. This is the exclusions section of your signage rules, section, section 5.6D. And, and what we, what we are seeking to do, you see in row number seven or number seven in the paragraph, is basically allow signage that is affixed to a motor vehicle or trailer, provided that motor vehicle or trailer is parked or stored on the same lot or site where the business being advertised is located. So if I have a, a store, then I can have my, my, my truck or, or my car or my truck and trailer can have a sign and that's fine as long as it's parked, you know, on my property where my business is located. So you may, if, if you look carefully at line seven, you can see that basically the current regulation does not allow any signage on a stationary motor vehicle, whether that's parked or stored, regardless of where it's located. And that was causing some problems with enforcement. So we wanted to broaden this just a little bit and allow commercial vehicles to have signs when they're on their establishment. So fairly simple and straightforward. We did clarify under the prohibitions, which is Section E prohibited sign types on the next page, 5-88, that signage affixed to a stationary motor vehicle, boat or trailer is not allowed in cases when that motor vehicle, boat or trailer is not on the site occupied by the business being advertised. So just carrying that forward, minor allowance, pretty basic. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I do, Chad.
Please, sir.
Let's, let's say you've got a, a fish market and you've got a van that you deliver around to different stores. And, but the van's got one of those, you know, wraps on it where the whole thing is wrapped and got all the telephone numbers and everything. And then after work, you take your van and drive it home and park it in your parking lot.
Right.
Is that, I mean, that's your vehicle back and forth to work as well as your delivery vehicle. Are you saying now that I can't drive it home and park it in my driveway?
Well, the, the current regulations would not permit that vehicle from being parked at your home today because it's not where your business operates. It gets a little bit more cloudy if you have a home occupation and you are actually undertaking business at, at, at your home. But in the, in the example that you gave, that would not be permitted. And I'll ask, if I've misspoken or haven't characterized how enforcement is, is, is reading the rules, I'll ask Conrad or Joey to correct me. But I, I, I don't think that would be a permitted, permitted use of signage.
What say you, Conrad?
I'm gonna have to get Joey. Can you, can you respond to that, Joey? I'm, I'm responding to Mr. Morosky on live right now.
You, you have the four members he's asking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I think like Chad said, if, if you have a home occupation, I don't know if that's an issue. We've had forever plumbers, painters, landscapers, a lot of people work out of their home, run their office and have a truck or vehicle that they drive back and forth. I think the prohibition before was, there's a timeframe there that you can't, it, it can't be sitting anywhere for a particular location. So I don't know that driving it back and forth to work would be an issue. Never has been before.
Okay. Thank you, Joey.
Chad?
Yes.
Earl Jaggers here. Question on the same deal. Say I've got that same shrimp truck. But I want to park it at the, the bank on my way home. You know, use the bank's parking lot.
Right.
Do we have any issue there?
That is not permitted.
Well, I mean, yeah, there's, we have that going on now. Not with shrimp, but other things.
Right. Right. I think that that might be part of why we're seeing something like this coming through from the enforcement side of the house. I think there is some concern about that sort of activity taking place. In addition to people just needing to be able to, you know, have their vehicles parked on there on the same lot where their business is.
There's, there's, there's one real estate company that has a, a box truck of some sort and that, that just shows up all over the place. It's in a church parking lot today and it's, it's over to sign company or a engineer's office the next day and
Right.
they just run all over town with that thing and park it to advertise their business.
Right. That, that's, that's not intended to be allowed. Now, if it, it depends on what kind of vehicle it is. Let's say, you know, Joey gave the plumber or the electrician example. Now, let's say they're in their vehicle and they're actually at someone's home. Now, let's say they're in their vehicle and they're actually at someone's home, but they're actually working. Um, in that instance, you know, that's okay. That's not a problem. Um, even if, you know, th- that activity were to go on for more than, you know, an afternoon or a week or so. As long as there's active service going on in the location where the vehicles parked, then that's okay. Um, but the, the examples that, that you guys are giving us where. I'll, I'll just pick on the shrimp truck. The shrimp truck is at church and they're not delivering shrimp to the church and they're not selling. You know, there's not a shrimp boil at the church. They're just parking there. That's, that would be prohibited.
Yeah, the real estate truck says something like, uh, buy a house for me and you can borrow this truck to move.
Hmm.
So it's like a, a, you know, a box truck that, a moving truck.
Right.
Um, and he parks it all over town, different places. So that'll be prohibited if we pass this.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions.
Hello.
Go ahead, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
Well, we know how he feels about it.
Would there be a situation? Where the truck? Or van or boat parked with the sign would, would be in opposition of the existing sign law. For example, is there, is there a, a situation where? They would get more of a sign with their truck than they would legally be able to have without the truck?
Right. That's a good question. So does, does the, the parking of their vehicle add to their, you know, quote unquote, total sign face area? And, and it's a good question. You may recall back in the prior ordinance, we did sort of rely on this. Total sign face area number um, by lot. And so we, there was a, a sort of a magic number, if you will, for each lot in town. This is how much signage you get. Um, we've, we've departed from that. Um, and so to your question, would the vehicular signage? Uh, i- i- in some way count towards the maximum allowable amount of permanent signage on the site? The, I think the answer is no. It was not the intent to um, include that in the calculation. Or require an applicant to um, incorporate that in their sign permit. Um, it was just perhaps too complicated uh, to, to, to sort of come up with that. So we, we wanted to just recognize that, you know, when the vehicle's at the, at the location where businesses. Uh, you know, where the business is located or when it's actively in operation, that would be okay. But if it's not, then, then that would not be okay. And we, we didn't, I don't believe we wanted to go, get into the business of. Adding that vehicular signage to the maximum amount of signage available on the site. Um, too complicated, too difficult for staff to keep up with.
Well, I suppose my, my, going back to what I'm really more concerned with is somebody buys a, a huge. Box van, piece of crap, puts his sign on there, parks on its lot, doesn't need a sign now. And the sign on the box truck would be larger than what he would have been allowed to have had he followed the signage rule. Plus, it might be put right up at the, at the curbing. Um, you know, where, you know, I'm just saying is.
Right.
If, if you open, if you open this kind of door, there's gonna be people that are gonna take as much advantage of it as they can.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I, I understand the point. Uh, the point that you're making is, is it possible that the signage associated with a motor vehicle could actually be larger? Than the permanent signage they would otherwise be allowed to have. Um, and that's, that's a good question. Uh, that's not something that we've talked about. Um, and you know, I mean, I think our, our issue was we wanted to find a way to. Um, you know, not burden or penalize, you know, folks who need to have vehicles to operate their business. At the same time, we didn't wanna put the staff in a position where it was necessary for them to walk from vehicle to vehicle to vehicle, to add up all the signage. To figure out how much is allowed or how much isn't. So, uh, you know, that's something that, you know, we can go back and talk about some more. Um, and, and see if we can come up with a, a way that, that, that is workable. Uh, that, that doesn't result in, you know, an enforcement official not being able to enforce the rules because they don't know. How many vehicles are allowed on a site or how many are there and what the maximum signage is and so forth. So I, I would ask you to, I, I say thank you for that question and, and say that we need to talk to staff about, about that issue.
Okay, I would say if um, until you do, let's take this off the table for tonight because. I see a lot of, lot of conflict here in this discussion, especially the big old large truck that John talked about. Parked at the very front of the parking lot, not observing the setbacks or tha- that kind of thing for signage. Um, I think John is right that there could be a lot of, uh, a lot of trouble where people, you know, take, uh, take advantage of this and. Put the staff in a, uh, you know, uh, they just don't know how to enforce it. So I would like to um, take this vehicle sign off the, off the table tonight, Chad, and see if you could figure it out and come back.
But before we do, before we do, and I appreciate that, before we take it off the, off the table. Let me just remind you that today, under the current rules. As long as that um, motor vehicle boat or trailer is there for less than thirty days. You can have as many as you want and they can be wherever you want. So this isn't like, it, it's not like we're creating some situation that. That isn't already here. Um, there's, you know, the, the, the rules just say after thirty days, that becomes a violation. But twenty nine days can come and go and you can keep those vehicles there uh, without any problem at all. And it doesn't even have to be on the same lot or site as your business. And so I, I, the, the point I'm trying to make is I don't know that that has been um, a large enforcement issue. But I can't speak for staff. I'm gonna have to defer to them on their kind of experience with the, the violations that we're seeing.
Yeah, what, what we're doing is we're trying to prevent just what you brought up, John. Um, and as Chad just said, the current ordinance is actually more prohibitive toward businesses. Um, especially those that have multiple vehicles. So um. This is actually better. Um, nothing's perfect, as you know. But it's actually better, especially for the business community, but it also helps prevent people from just parking their vehicles anywhere. Uh, we put in the provision that there's nothing wrong with, obviously, driving around, you know, if it's. Whomever's discount furniture store and they're delivering furniture and it's parked in somebody's driveway. That's not an issue as long as they're conducting business. But this is done to actually prevent what, what it is you're talking about. Now, can they, can they buy a vehicle and put it there? Uh, yes, but if it's a, if it's a piece of junk, then that's another, that's another violation. So, but uh, but this is to help the business communities that have. Vehicles with their signage on it.
Well, in, in my opinion, Joey, I'm just.
Just like to add. Now, I was.
Okay. I, I can make a suggestion that might help us a little bit here. Which is that we can explore um. The possibility of a, a percentage limitation to the signage on the vehicle. And I, I need to think about that, but I can, I, I think if you're willing to allow us to move forward with, with, with this and uh, with the caveat. That we're going to uh, look for some limitations so that people don't go out and buy, you know, a tractor trailer. Uh, and, and abuse this. Um, you know, we look for some way.
Sorry, Chad. Let me, can I, do you mind if I hop in real quick?
Please do, sir.
Is the, yeah, sorry, um, it, it's. I just wanna make sure that we, that it's communicated that parking tractor trailers um, that are junked or dilapidated in appearance. We, our code enforcement officers do have the, the junk car ordinance. So the vehicles that would be parked with signage, if there was one that was compliant per this proposed language. They would be operated, operational vehicles. It would be registered and operational. Um, what we're, what we're really working on here is to address um, some code enforcement challenges we're having. With determining if a vehicle's been stationary for the thirty days. Um, and that then our code enforcement officers use techniques like chalking the tire with the uh. And it is, it is able to withstand rain and, and water. However, it's just a little bit too um. Not, not, not as, not as solid as we would like it to be. So in talking and presenting this language to our chief code enforcement officer, Chris Marland. He was in accordance that, you know, we could address vehicles that are, could be. Caught, if you will, with that net of junk motor vehicles. So that way, as Joey and Chad have been discussing, we can have vehicles that are, you would be considered fleet vehicles. To be parked at the location where their parent business is located.
Conrad, are you, are you saying then that they, but they can't be parked there just? Over thirty days? They have to be on the road back and forth and around town. Uh, every day or every week or something? What, what are you saying about the thirty day?
The thirty days is a language we're proposing to strike from the U D O.
Oh. Okay. All right.
Right. We, we, this is Chad. We are trying to strike the thirty days and say, listen, you, if you, if you're, if your vehicle is there because it's part of your business. We're not going to monitor this stationary issue. Um, you're allowed to have it. If your vehicle is located elsewhere than where your business is, is conducted, you're not allowed to have it. Never mind this thirty days or twenty nine days or one days. You're not allowed to have it. So we're, we're, we're trying to, to, to work with the um, you know, the, the situation that we've got. You know, a- a- at this point. And I, like I said, I, I, I think this is a step in the right direction. I understand the issue about, you know, could something like this, you know, be abused? I, I, I think it could. I think that staff has clarified it's not gonna be, you know, some inoperable vehicle or something that's not road ready. Um, you know, if, if, if you're, if concerns linger, then I would suggest the possibility of limiting the maximum amount of size on the vehicle. To what might be allowed on the wall of the building uh, or less. Um, and you know. I'm, I mean, again, that, that complicates our code enforcement officer's job. They've gotta go now find out how big of a wall sign can I have? Um, but, you know, I, I think that, you know, the, the, the end, end result is, you know, you don't have a, a, a blank check. For sign size on a vehicle that's out by the road.
So, so Conrad, if we go ahead with approving this, y'all can work with it for another six months and see how it's going. And if we start running into problems, then maybe Chad could come back with a, 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 another amendment to fix it. Is that, is that kind of the way you're, y'all are feeling down there?
I, I would agree with that, Chairman Parker. Um, as Joey indicated, you know, we, this is a. A, a move in the, in the direction to support our business, our local, our local business community. And as y'all are well aware, Chad's been making more and more appearances to the U D O post adoption, which is. A great sign I would, I would point to suggesting or indicating that. The U D O is a continual work in progress and we're still adapting and modifying accordingly.
Okay. Okay, um, if, if we could just hold the discussion now and let Chad finish up uh, with your proposal. Is, you got anything else, Chad?
No, that, well, that's it on the, on the veh- vehicular signage. We need to talk a little bit about wall signage, but thi- this is it on the vehicles.
Okay. I think we, we got it. Go ahead.
All right. Let's talk about wall signs for a second. Um, so as I mentioned at the head of the conversation, um, we. Two, two things are happening right now and, and they're both very good things for the city. The first one is, you may recall inside the CBD district and in the sort of downtown proper. Um, you know, we didn't make a lot of changes to the zoning and development standards for the downtown. Frankly, because, you know, we didn't think that anything too much was gonna be happening. We did create a P D D district and an ability to have some flexibility in the downtown. But we didn't make a lot of adjustments to uses and dimensional standards in CBD and, and the downtown proper. And to our happy surprise, um, there's been an incredible amount of activity and vibrancy. Um, happening in the downtown and that is a very good thing. Um, and we should uh, strive to support that and encourage it. And um, make it easier for people to come in and reoccupy some of those existing buildings. And so we've been doing that. Um, as along that line. Um, we've come to realize that there are some issues uh, with respect to signage. Um, in the CBD um, and in the, sort of the downtown proper. And what we would like to do to address that problem. Uh, is make some adjustments to the table that you see here. This is on approximately page dash five, five dash one oh six. This is the wall sign dimensional requirements. Um, and I'm gonna, I've got an illustration that I'm gonna show you in a moment. Uh, but I wanted to just familiarize you with this table first. Couple of changes that we've made uh, include one, we've relocated the CBD MX P D D district provisions. Um, from their own row, which you can see is struck um, and added them to the general business. Um, CB P D C I, et cetera. So we've incorporated the signage rules that would have otherwise been applicable in MX and CBD. Um, into the other commercial districts, uh, district provisions that we have. So um, that's one thing that we've done. Um, as a result of doing that, the amount of. Wall sign fa- the wall sign face area that would be permitted in MX and CBD has increased. Um, it's increased from thirty two square feet um, to uh, the system that we are using for our other commercial districts. The thirty two square foot number was simply untenable uh, for downtown businesses. Um, the signage was insufficient uh, in size uh, to accommodate the, the kind of redevelopment renovation that we were looking for. In the community and we had a lot of problems with that. So that was an issue. The sign size was too small. Okay. We have another issue as well, and that issue is we've got some taller buildings in the downtown. Um, some buildings are three stories, some buildings are four stories, some buildings are considerably higher than that. Uh, and we want to um, encourage those taller buildings uh, to be renovated, to be redeveloped. And frankly, new tall buildings to be constructed. And so um, what we are suggesting be done. Is that we adjust the calculation for how large wall signs can be. To create an incentive for wall signage that might be located above the fourth floor upwards. Um, by adding some additional linear foot amount. To signs that are located on the fourth floor, the fifth floor, the sixth floor and on up. You can't exceed the maximums, right? If you look at the table in all the districts, if you've got it on the primary facade, you get three hundred square feet. That's it. We're not changing that. That stays at three hundred. What we are adjusting is the linear foot measurement. Uh, and what we would like to do is. And what we would like to do is propose a minor increase to that, that you go up half a linear foot per, half a square foot of sign area per linear foot of building facade based on the number of stories you have in your building. Okay? So I'm going to show you an example of this in a minute. But before I do, does anybody have any questions about what we're doing? One, we are joining MX and P D D and CBD with the other industrial, other commercial districts. The other thing we're doing is increasing the amount of sign area that would be allowed in MX, CBD, and P D D from 32 to either of 150 or 300 based on which facade you are talking about. And then finally, we are creating an ability for signs that are on the fourth floor or larger in CBD, MX, and the other commercial districts to have a larger individual sign area. Again, not, not exceeding the maximum, but a larger sign area than you would have on the third or fourth, or third or second floor. Okay? Is everybody clear on the three things that we're doing? Here's an example. This is a two-story building, okay? And let's just, for, just for fun, we'll just stay with CBD. So this is a two-story building in the CBD district. It's 50 feet wide. Okay? So based on the rules that we have, the maximum sign area for a wall sign on the primary facade is 1.5 square feet of sign area times the building frontage, which in this example is 50 feet wide. So I get a 75 square foot wall sign on that facade. Okay? Pretty, pretty simple, pretty basic. That hasn't changed at all. That, that mechanics of how that works. What we did make adjustments to are for those buildings that are taller than three stories. So on the right-hand side of the illustration, you see a five-story building, right? One, two, three, four, five. And what we have done is allow buildings that are four stories or taller to basically increase the amount of sign area per linear foot by half a foot for each story above three, okay? Up to the maximum that's allowed, which in this instance would be 300 square feet. So similar building, just like the other ones, 50 feet wide. But instead of being two stories tall, it's five stories tall. So how we calculate how big this wall sign can be is the 1.5 that applies to every building that's either one, two, or three stories tall, plus a half a foot for each story above three, right? So 1.5 plus five for the fourth floor, plus five, thank you, Conrad, for the fifth floor. Okay? So you get 2.5 linear square feet or 2.5 square feet for every linear foot of facade area. In this instance, that sign gets to be 125 square feet. So that's how it works. Half a square foot increase in sign area for each additional story above three. Okay? A lot to talk about, but a pretty simple concept. Anybody have any questions about this? And again, the bottom line is, the taller the building, the larger the sign can be as you go up the building, up to the maximum that's allowed in the district, which is 300 or 150, depending on which facade it's on.
You said this was going to be quick.
I did say it was quick. I, I, yeah. I, the, the concept is fairly simple, which is, again, we're just adding a little bit of allowable face area for each additional building story that you go up. And I, I'm teasing you. We, staff and I have been working on this for many, many hours. And we were looking for something that's a very simple way to address these taller buildings that, you know, if you've got a five-story building, a 32-square-foot wall sign on the fifth floor, isn't going, isn't going to work. You've got to be able to recognize, you know, these, these taller buildings. And so we're suggesting this as a, as a fairly simple approach of, you know, just giving an additional amount of sign face area for each additional floor past the third floor.
I have a motion.
Hold on, hold on. You going to put Joey on the ladder to measure this thing?
They'll come in for a sign permit, and they'll need to identify in their sign permit the size of the sign and which building story they're proposing to locate it on. Now, Joey or someone will have to go out there and make sure that, hey, you said you were going to put it on the fourth floor. It's on the fourth floor. Okay, everything's cool. That we will have to check, but assumingly, that'll be in their drawings.
Okay.
I like your idea of putting Joey on a ladder, though.
Yeah, I think it'd look good on the fifth floor up, measuring the sign. Put two ladders up.
Never give Chad any ideas, okay?
John Black, go ahead.
Just, just for clarification, we have two businesses in the five-story building. The first business has the first three floors. The second business has the last two floors, four and five. Four and five, they get the big wall sign. One, one and two, they can still have the smaller sign on that floor, or is it only one sign for the building?
It's a great, great question. So if it's a single tenant, then you just get one sign. If it's multi-tenant, you get, each tenant gets a sign if you choose to give it to them. However, you still, no matter how many tenants you have, you get a maximum amount of sign area on that facade. That's either going to be 300 square feet or 150 square feet, depending upon whether it's a primary facade or a secondary facade. And it's, it's the responsibility of the building owner or the manager or the whoever handles the tenants to adjudicate between them about who gets what sign at what location. You know,
So if there, if there are multiple signs, it would reduce the size because they're subject to a total.
That's correct. That it's not an additive, not, not, each tenant doesn't get 300 square feet. That's not how it works at all. It's a, it's a cap, and you guys have to work within that cap.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Chad? Okay. Is that the end of your presentation?
It is, actually. Yes. We are going to go see city council in early April. We will certainly share with them the discussion that you guys have, have, have had with us regarding the vehicle signs and how do we make sure that, you know, we're, you know, not, not, not opening Pandora's box here. We'll talk about that. And hopefully have a public hearing in mid-April.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? I think Mr. Kirkpatrick, he said it would be short, thinking that we wouldn't have any questions. So we did. Conrad, are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this issue?
Chairman Parker, I don't see any raised hands in the, in the feature, nor, nor has anyone indicated so in the chat.
Okay. So if there's no other questions, Joey, do you have a recommendation?
I believe that these amendments are necessary due to implementation of the ordinance, and staff does recommend approval.
Okay. Any final questions before I call for a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Black.
Thank you. I would like on the record that this situation, if approved, comes back to us in, say, nine months as far as the signage for motor vehicles to find out what changes need to be made if, if it works out the way it is. We talked about that. We could address it later on. Well, I want it on the record that later on is a definite nine months.
Okay, we'll do it on December 25th.
Sounds good to me. I'll be here.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good idea, John, for us to have a staff report back to us as to how this is going. We probably don't need Chad, but at least a good report, you know, from the staff. So.
Yes. That's right, Chairman Black, we got it.
Yeah, put it on there, December, not the 25th. I was kidding.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion on Chad's proposal?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
I move we recommend approval. This request to amend the unified development order post changes, the motion for consistency of the proposed amendments with the comprehensive plan in that section for land use goal one. Recommendation five of the comprehensive plan calls for an update of the unified development ordinance. Section four land use goal one, recommendation five. I lost my spot. The comprehensive plan calls for the ensuring sound land planning decisions that are consistent with the vision of the plan. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that section for land use goal two. Recommendation four of the comprehensive plan addresses confusion conflicts and obsolescence of the zoning code through a new unified development ordinance. Section four land use goal two, recommendation four of the comprehensive plan, a new U D O will, will be modern, graphically intensive, and user-friendly from both a public petitioner and administrative perspective, planning and zoning board believes this request.
Oh, slow down.
Whoops.
Stop after perspective.
Yep.
There you go. Option number one, we have a motion to approve option number one. Do I have a second? Second, Nicole, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Any opposed? Want to pose? Okay. Bill opposed? All right. So the motion carries. Thank you, Chad. I'll be interested to hear your presentation at city council. See how they react.
Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Have a great night, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Chad. Is there any other business to come before this board?
That was a six, that was a six to one vote?
Yes.
Make sure, no, sir. Nothing else.
Nothing else to come before the board? If there's nothing else to come from the board, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Hope to see you next month. Thank you, Joey. Thank you, Conrad. You're doing a great job over there, both of you. Appreciate it. We'll see you next month.
Well, good night.
Bye, Nancy.